Should we call the board? Will everyone please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments of April 19, 2011, statute for irregular heating.
I see.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Now it's time for public comments. Belinda Tony, Parks Intermediate Test Schools.
Well, we're just here today to, uh, brag just a little bit about our kids and the improvements they've made. Our language arts department and our math department have been working really hard to encourage and motivate our students. We felt that a lot of our students had the ability, they just didn't take it to heart and understand how important it was to work at these tests. And after speaking with Trish and Charlene, our language arts department came up with, they wanted to improve their benchmark scores a minimum of 5 percent. And if you look at these graphs, you'll see that they met those scores on the benchmark. And this is our sixth, seventh, and eighth scores, benchmark one, two, and three. And with the exception of the eighth grade, on that third benchmark, they were into the tier three. And if you know anything about our eighth grade, we've known all along that there's been issues there. But if you look at them and know where they came from and look at these scores, they've made great progress. Once you know your students and you know where they were and you look at where they've come to, they're not where we want them to be, but we're continuing to push and continuing to encourage our students to be the very best they can. And along with all the programs that we've got in place, and sometimes it gets very difficult to juggle all the things that we're hard to do, our kids are working hard, our staff are working hard. We're calling on parents to help us, and sometimes with everything that's going on in our communities. We know our parents love our kids and love their kids, but sometimes they don't have everything that they need to support them, and we're offering as we can to try to help those parents in supporting their kids and encouraging them also to reach out for help to the community. So we're just here tonight to brag on our kids. And like you all know, that we know our kids can do it. We're working, striving to push them, to help them to know that they can do it. And that's what we're here for tonight, just to, you know, give a big hurrah for our kids in that they are moving forward. And I also want to thank Mr. Roach for coming up for our assembly the other day. The kids really enjoyed it, they appreciated it. They didn't expect it, so that was an added bonus, and we had multiple comments about him. He was really here, so we appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. I know you're pleased with the critical benchmarks, but what would you, how would you explain that briefly? Can you tell us just a few things that should be included with the results in the critical benchmarks?
Well, our teachers have all been working together, pulling together, planning together. We use PlayTooth, we use Acuity. They've worked hard on the writing roadmap. Our math department is working together to, they use Acuity a lot in the classroom. Just multiple strategies, encouraging the students, rewarding them. We have Saturday School, that Saturday Academy that's averaging twice a month through our seeds grant. We have the after-school for the eighth grade, and I'm hoping to get several of those students to attend the summer critical skills component that's going to be offered. So there's a lot of different things in place for our kids, and they're just now starting to take advantage of it. Last year, we had no students take advantage of the after-school and the summer's critical skills. This year, we already have several that have committed to attending, and we've had several that have been attending the Saturday Academy. That's been great for our students, they've really enjoyed that. And when we look at the students that attended the Saturday Academy and the after-school, we see an increase in their scores, an average increase across the board, pretty much for the ones that are attending those programs. So they've really benefited our students. And it's been school-wide effort for our teachers and our students in getting those scores up.
Is this part of your thinking?
Yes, part of it is. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you once again for all the support.
Just to let the board know, it was a very rewarding assembly. I know the students enjoyed it, the teachers, and also I enjoyed seeing the pride that you have and the reward for accomplishing what you shared with us tonight.
Just gotta keep that momentum going.
It says a lot of you to take your evening and the others here with you to come and report that to us. It's so refreshing to hear good news.
Yes, it's great. It's great to be able to report good news.
But thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe Parsons, this Energy Manager.
Okay, I'm here this evening to give you all another one of our semi-annual reports on your energy program. And continuing with the trend after Belinda, I think we've pretty much mostly got good news on this. I brought up a couple of handouts for you. The first one is Energy Program Effectiveness Update. It's got March 2011 on it. This report was prepared by Energy Education a couple of months ago. A March report would reflect usage from February back. I went over this report with Mr. Roach and Ms. Lucas a couple of weeks ago, I believe, and we found some discrepancies in the report, and I sent off and had them redo it again. This is what's-
Are we on this better? You hear?
Yes, yes. And I'm sorry yours aren't in color, but my printer takes forever. So I'll get to another page here, I'll have to give you a couple of figures if you're not able to see. This is a return on investment report. It tells you how you are doing on the money you're investing in this energy program. Year one and year two are complete, and as of those periods, we had a 44 percent return on our investment. In the first year, 92 percent in the second year. They are projecting a 106 percent return on investment for year three, which is, by the way, now complete. I just let the, all of those fields entered into the program today and sent that report in. If you look over on the third page, one with all the bar graphs, the very first two, you probably can't see the numbers inside of the taller graph for year one actual and year two actual. Year one actual, that figure should be $229,818. And year two actual should be $251,892. Now, this, as I've explained to you before, this program, we contracted with them for the first four years, and we paid for the program for the first four years. There's a cost for the program as well as the software, and that's reflected in the higher costs. If you see in year five, the cost for the program dropped dramatically. The reason for that is we're no longer paying a monthly fee. Although, as long as you still employ at least a part-time energy manager, you will avail yourself to all of their consultants, all of their programs, and ability to go to their conferences and network with those people. And you can see the difference from year five one, of how much your savings grows compared to what you're expending on the program. I've been to these conferences, they are fantastic. I would encourage, if anybody from the board ever wants to go, they're usually about two days, and it is phenomenal to see how many people, how many counties across the country, how many systems. Loudoun County, Virginia, I know all of you are probably familiar with them, how large the system. They've been with this program for over 20 years, and they're having phenomenal success.
You're making a move from Chicago, aren't you?
If you all let me go. I'm headed to Chicago. I hope you let me go, I've already got tickets for the Cubs and the Giants.
I see you're taking a board meeting today.
Absolutely.
How about that?
Absolutely. You might have to share a bun with Brian, we can send you in there. Over on the fourth page, it gives you the district's net energy savings through the first 34 months, $307,000. They're doing something different in this report. Those of you that's been here for a while, you've heard me come in before, and you've heard me talk about equivalent of trees planted and cars taken off the road, and that's all well and good, but what they've done in this report is equate that to teaching positions saved. And at the number that we provided to them as a starting salary for the teacher at 33.8, I believe is what we provided them, the equivalent to date, we've saved 9.1 teaching positions that may have had to be cut due to higher energy and utility costs. Projected out over 10 years, they're projecting $2,261,000 in savings, and that equates to nearly 67 teaching positions. I told most of you that my personal goal when I took this job was to achieve a million dollars' worth of savings in the first four years of the program. And I'm still hopeful that I'll be able to do that. However, the other handout I gave you says Lincoln County Schools Overall Program Summary. It's a four-page document, and it gives you month-by-month breakdowns, how much cost avoidance we've had, saving money on our utility bills, what the percentage is, special savings are things like water leaks that I've dealt with the water company and got reimbursements that we maybe didn't pursue in the past. There's one large one here for $6,200, was a gas meter that we shouldn't have been paying for for about 14 months, and we got a reimbursement from the current property owners as well as the gas company for that. Page two of that document is school year 2009, 2010. The reason these figures start in May, I was hired in the middle of April 2008, and the first month of data that I reported come out in May. So, and as you can imagine, two weeks on the job, I didn't know a whole lot, so the savings was probably not as great as they have become. Page three is 2010, 2011 school year. For this school year, we saved 26 percent cost avoidance and savings on our utility programs. And then the very last page gives you a breakdown of where we're saving the money. Our biggest area of savings is in electricity, reducing electricity. That's from cutting back heating and cooling systems on the weekends and the evenings, turning out lights, turning off computers. There are a lot of other things that we still can do to up that number. Natural gas, we've had significant savings. Water and sewer, in this county, sewer rates are tied to your water consumption. In other states that employ this program, such as the Midwest, they do a lot of irrigation, they do a lot of grounds watering, they can do a lot with that to reduce their water consumption. Here, pretty much what we see, our water consumption is confined to what the kitchens use, the restrooms, and what the custodians use. There's not a lot I can do with water to reduce water consumption and hence sewer consumption. All total, our cost avoidance to date through the first three full years of the program has been $723,861. When you add in the special savings, which is recovered monies that we didn't pursue maybe in the past, that brings the total up to $738,843 for three years. I've got one year left. I'm hopeful that I can get us up to a million dollars by the end of that four years. But as of right now, the program seems to be running good. I have to commend all of the principals and the staff, but professional and service personnel within the county, they do a magnificent job trying to comply with this program, doing what they can. There are occasional things that fall through the cracks, there are some things that I notice, you know, mechanical things that quite frankly has cost us money. I'd be on the mark if I caught a couple of things earlier than I did. But one of the ways this is reflected, some of you are aware that last year, seven of our educational, seven of our nine educational buildings received the EPA's Energy Star label as energy efficient buildings. I'm happy to report to you that this year, six of those seven have re-qualified for the Energy Star label. The one school that dropped out only missed it by four points. You have to have a 75 or better, they achieved a 71. That has a lot more to do with how many other public entities are participating in the program, because when we compete in Energy Star, we're competing against schools in California, Arizona, Florida, Minnesota, all across the country. And the more people that participate in the program, the better job we have to do to maintain to be in that top 25 percent. So far, we're doing a good job with that. So that's pretty much my report. I'll answer any questions that I can, and I also extend an invitation to all of you that, you know, if you've got an evening sometime, you want to see what we do and how we do it, and you want to drive around, well, I'll take you out with me, and we'll go through some of the schools, and I'll show you the areas where we're saving money, how we're saving money. It's as simple as turning out lights sometimes.
Before you go, Mr. Parsons, could you share with us, you're going on a trip, and the funding for that trip comes from?
Well, right now, because it was already budgeted, I know where you're going with this, but right now, because it was already budgeted, it's coming out of the general fund. However, as separate from this program, but as my job as energy manager, I have involved us with something called the PJM Demand Reduction Program, which PJM is the corporation that manages the electrical grid on the eastern seaboard of the United States. They have a program where if you will voluntarily reduce your demand, electrical demand, in the time of crisis or emergency, they will pay you money. They pay us $28,000 a year that Mr. Roach has graciously given me as a energy budget for me to spend that money as a rewards program for the schools, and I can report that I just, Kim can verify and Belinda, I just returned $12,050 to the schools as energy rewards. We're buying more energy efficient lights. I've invested in some high bay LED lighting that are instant on, instant off. You can see it, Ranger has a couple of lights, so does West Hamlin, Duval Gymnasium, there's one over here in the maintenance office. The advantage of that for us is, you know, custodians always clean the gym last, those metal hay lights are the most expensive lights we operate, and they'll leave them on from the time school's out until they go in at nine o'clock, you know, whatever time to clean. They'll be on all that time with nobody in the gym. With these new lights, they're instant off, when they're ready to go in and clean, they throw the switch and they come on just like these lights. There's no lag time. They don't have to wait 15 to 20 minutes for them to warm up. But in answer to your question, in the future, and I just told Birdie, if we have that same money, and we are going to have that same money, I've already talked with that person, next year, the money for the travel to these conferences can be paid out of that energy budget, as well as the rewards program to the schools and purchase of energy efficient things such as programmable thermostats, timers for vending machines, various things like that. There's a lot of small things that we can purchase, that I can purchase out of that energy budget that's going to make us save a lot of money down the road.
I also would like to share with the board that his, if I'm correct, Birdie, half his salary comes, his part-time energy head of his total salary is half of it or all of it out of energy.
Right, right now, on full-time energy head.
And I also want to say, and Birdie would touch upon this, is that we're saving a lot of money. We use him in workman's comp investigations, which are critical, and not only has he saved a lot of money for us and the staff and everyone in Energy Education, but he also, everyone knows in this county, that if they claim workman's comp, there's an investigation, and Mr. Parsons will do it. And so we're saving a lot of money that way for the county. So he really has two roles that he saves us money.
For the past three years now, every time an employee, a school employee reports an on-the-job accident, I go out and do a full investigation, take recorded statements, photographs, whatever's needed. We have a report on file three months, six months down the road, if they file a disability claim, we've got a current report that's on file. That, Brick Street initiated that with us, they liked what we did, it's since gone to Chardis, and Chardis has been impressed with what we're doing, as well as some administrative investigations I do for you involving other things other than workman's comp. Any other questions?
Thanks, Joe.
I'm going to go ahead and get up and call them.
That's fine. Next thing is the administrative section. A is the out-of-county transfer for the 2011, 2012 school year. B is eight additional employment dates for the current contract year for JRO, T C instructors. That's Mr. Plumlee and Mr. Atkins. C is to approve the junior ROTC instructors annual certification and pay agreement, US Army, plus an 11-month, 220-day employment term. D is a continuing right of first refusal between the Board of Education and the Lions Club. E is installation of the aluminum wrap sign at the entrance of the Lincoln County High School. F, out-of-state trip for the forensics team, that's Ms. Nelson. G, a revision of the Salary Schedule 16, that is the Assistant Superintendent. H, a revision of the Salary Schedule for the elementary secondary. I is a computer repair service contract for recent two. Here's another contract in J with recent two. K is the bylaws and policies printed and codified. That's the policies, I believe, that we just reviewed.
Yes, and there might be a little addition to that, but those will be, go on review as soon as we make some changes that we had today from the board meeting, and when those changes are made, they'll go out and be publicly viewed, so it's not immediately until these changes. And some grammatical errors will be, have been noticed, but if we do not get those in time, they'll still go out and we'll make a note. Those are, will be corrected. Thanks, Mr. Roach.
I believe we're at L, that's five additional days for Mr. Limble. M is 15 additional days for Ms. Tony. N is a 4.5 increase in the cost of mills. K, zero awarding food service bids for 2010 low school year. P is the out-of-state travel for the quality personnel.
If I may, could I go through that, the P, and tell where those funds are coming from?
Yes, sir.
The first from Carol Turley and Lucy Frye, that comes out of Title I. Joseph Parsons, you know, is paid out of-
General Fund.
-general funds. The counselor there, or counselors, pay from the counselors grant that you all will wear off. Jody Ice is paid, and I don't know what this means, but it's E E T T grant. It is not coming out of county funds, but a grant. Then you see John Rory from the American History Grant, and Ashley Arvall out of the school funds for rewards, and that could be levy, is that correct?
I believe it is.
Coming out of levy funds. Thank you.
Is there any, does anyone have any other questions regarding the administrative section?
I would like, go ahead.
Go ahead, Carol.
I would like to discuss the E more before we go on.
That's installation of the aluminum wrap sign. Go ahead.
Well, I've talked to several people who are familiar with the aluminum wrap sign, and they're telling me that if you throw a beer bottle, it will actually go through that sign. And I know that we're going to have things like that to happen, we don't have people to go by and throw rocks and shoot, and I can't see us fighting as long as we have to have a decent sign over there and then have something that may only last us two years, and that it will tarnish, that it's going, sometimes going to stay on top of it all the time to keep all that tarnish removed from it. And we talked about the ladders, the seven-inch ladders that were shown in Mr. Roach's office not being diggined. I went over there when we left that meeting, and I took my finger, and those ladders are that tall. Now, the seven-inch ladders, you put that up against a tin paper, 10-inch paper, and it's almost three times as big as what we have over there. We don't have four-inch ladders over there. And I'm really concerned about dealing with aluminum, if one of my beer bottles taken in it, or whatever. I'm in favor of the green, but I want something that will stay as long as that school stays over there.
How big is the aluminum on the brand?
I remember, it's 10-inch for the Lincoln County High School, and 4-inch, if I remember correctly, for the other letter for Southwestern and primary care.
And you have to remember also that they're going to be in black, and these ladders over here are not, so they don't show up at all. And then it's going to be close to the road, and it's going to be facing, either way you're coming, it's going to be right when you're driving toward it. I don't think we'll have any problem seeing those ladders at all.
My question is, have they already started on the aluminum wrap? Because I know when we talked, we were all, we kind of agreed on the aluminum wrap, and my question is, have they already started manufacturing this up?
No. You know, the only thing, I'm not sure that I would concur, because it will dent, bullets will go through it, there's no question. A rock will dent, but I'm not sure that the backing will be that flinty, you know, that a beer bottle could be stuck in it. But I do know that if it's shot with a rifle or something, it will go through, and I do believe it would dent. But I asked a question about tarnishing that, and they said it would not tarnish, but I'm not the expert, so I leave that up to you all that know about aluminum, but that's all I can say, and that's all I want to say.
Well, it's my understanding that there will be no filler between these-
There is, there is a filler, yes.
Is it not just boards between that, just occasional boards?
No, not occasional boards. It'll be supported with what, I can't remember the name, like a cement board or something else, several inches thick, maybe three or four inches thick. There is something, filler in between, that's pretty substantial, but a rifle, you know, I mean, you can't withstand that. And it will dent, of course, you know, if you hit it with a major rock, but I don't think it will go through. That's the only thing that I would share with the board, that what's been told to me.
I guess I'm concerned, if some of those small, I mean, the clinic and its media are four inches, and that's not very big.
Do you have, did you stop back here and look at these out here? They're two inches for the clinic.
Well, they're too small, we can't read. That's my concern with four inches.
Well, twice as big.
Well, I know twice as big.
Will it be close to the road?
You still can't see it.
Well, Carol, what would the Lincoln County High School be your thought?
The one he showed us was- The one he showed us was.
I mean, how they're existing.
The capital ladders were four inches, the capitals. Then it went down smaller from there. Now, that's measuring with my finger. I know it's not four inches, but it was close.
So, these small granite ladders would be about the same size as the capital ladders are in the existing size?
Yeah. And they will be black, and they will be closer to the road.
What color's the granite?
The granite's gonna be grayish.
I have a sample.
What do we, what do we do with this? I mean, we don't have to make a decision on this one. Let's table this tonight. Let's just table, talk about it.
We didn't want it before Mr. Roach leaves.
My name will forever be in mud if I don't get it before I leave.
Maybe, maybe cement.
Cement. That's right. It should be cement.
If everybody else still agrees that you'd rather have the aluminum, I mean, I just wanted to try one last time to, maybe to think about it. Actually tried to persuade you, go my way.
The granite sign itself would be small. The granite part would be small.
If it pleased the board, Trish and I are conferring on the Assistant Superintendent recommendation tonight. We'd like to postpone that for a week until next Monday to have a special meeting. We could have that on the agenda at that time. If the board concur, or concur, then it's okay to have that special meeting next Monday on the Assistant Superintendent nomination. We could do it then.
Can we have next Tuesday?
We think everybody's our calendar schedule. I don't think we would object next Tuesday, but I don't know about you all's schedule. And this would really help me trying to get the sign finished before I leave. Because I'd like to be, not have to rush, I'd like to run out.
I see a speech today. Be regular meeting, six o'clock.
Regular meeting at six o'clock on Tuesdays, is that okay? Is that all right with you all? So, we'll just do that. We'll put that on that agenda. That and the Assistant Superintendent.
Very well.
Okay.
The Assistant Superintendent item?
That's on the personnel schedule.
Okay.
And we're just gonna put that, we're just gonna.
I just wanted to say that to help knowing that instead of this wondering, I can connect that one and help the board members out, and it can help me out. I think the interviewing just finished Saturday or Sunday, and we'd like a little bit more time on that.
So, let's do this. Let's, I make a motion that we table the installation of the aluminum wrap sign at the entrance of Lincoln County High School until the meeting on May the 24th at six o'clock. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. All right. Does anyone else have any more questions regarding any of the items?
I guess on J, we have an audiology contract.
The audiology contract, but that was the other contract. I'll talk to them.
Yeah, I know. I had a question.
Oh, okay. I did know that.
I was gonna wait till you finished, then you were back, so. I see, I guess we're dividing that way with salary, 12 hours of time on the road. And so, we would get 36 days of service, and 30 days would be providing service, and in six days would be office time. I guess my question is, does she give a schedule? I mean, who knows here when she's in the county?
We have, Trish, can you answer that, or do you want me to make a stand back? You may know more than I do.
I don't know, my dear.
You make a stand back, and I'll piggyback on you.
Okay. Wait, I think the Special Education Department does have a schedule, and they also, during the registration, the screenings for preschool, they may find where students may need further evaluations, and then they send these students on to the audiologist there at recent, and they do the further testing. But there is some type of accountability and documentation that they keep to know.
Okay. I know that sometimes cameras take students down there, but it says here that you'll actually be an accountant in these.
In the, I mean, we have.
Right. I just want to know how we, how do we document this?
Well, I'm sure it is partially the sign-in, you know, the days that Mr. Snyder has contracted to come in, just like the pre-screening prior to, you know, those days are scheduled. And so, she is coming during those periods. If something is found, then she does the screening with the preschool teachers and the speech therapists and the other specific people that are conducting those screenings.
So, the Director of Special Education.
Does.
They also keep a law. You said that?
Thank you. Nothing to add.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? If there's not any more questions, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the administrative section, section A through D, F through P. I'll say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to the finance.
Okay. For the finances, we have two items, one for the meeting that was canceled and one for this meeting. The first one, $1,39,933.26. The second one, $779,166.56. Have any questions? We can address them now, or we can address them after the meeting?
I have a few.
Okay. I also didn't get into the packet that I mailed to you guys, but I laid on the desk, February financial statements. Okay, I M C, our retirees, our Rex Tony, with 32.95 years of service, and Nancy Matthews with 23. And I M D, purchase of a D14 25 folder and interim based on the state via price of $13,008.13.
And that stuff's envelopes, and saves a lot of hour and time from people here. And everybody would be able to use it countywide, and it would be a lifesaver for them, because we send out a lot of things.
I didn't propose either, I asked you, I had no idea.
Volunteers, so.
All right. You all heard the financial items. Is there any questions?
I believe so.
All right. I'll say it. All those in favor of accepting the financial?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to our personnel section. Looking at our personnel section.
There is one item on there that I shared earlier, that we would remind everybody about Assistant Superintendent position being moved, and that's a disorder by a wear-off. Okay? That's all.
All right. Looking over the personnel schedule. Has everyone had a chance to do?
I think we got a corrected copy. Thanks for the handout, a corrected copy for the first page. On P C, employment of a professional personnel, the remainder of the school year, I think I'm in, on the blue card, he said one substitute, so that, that was a correction.
You all see A, B, C, D, E, F? Your head.
On E, Ms. McCombs, she will start as assistant, I just want to clarify, she will start as assistant principal, late 30 minutes. You gotta be a question, principal or?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
They are short right now, and we did not want to take her out of the class because it's a very important time, West test and everything else, and even prior to West test. But after that, we feel we can limp along, and she gets a lot of experience to help out.
Did you see the substitute service personnel? Is everybody okay with that? F? G? I? What is it?
We forgot A.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm just.
Sorry.
It's okay. They're just, they're just symbols.
Okay.
I is the extracurricular personnel, J, and K. I have one thing that I would like to, for everyone to consider, is that on D, the employment of the professional personnel, I would like to table that until the 24th. That is this next session. That is D. We can table that until the 24th. That's the special session that we'll get ready to have. So, I make a motion that we table the employment of professional personnel until May the 24th, six o'clock. Do I have a second? Yeah, just I D.
A second.
So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to table on D until the 24th?
We have discussion. I just want to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Roach, has Mr. Limble recommended this individual?
Yes, sir.
And you recommend that too?
I am.
Okay, that's all I.
Good. So, I would like to table until the 24th. And I, motion is made and second. All those in favor to table until the 24th? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I don't know, chair, but I.
Okay. So, the motion carries. We're gonna table until the 24th. Is there any other questions? Uh, we have to approve.
Oh.
Yeah, it's okay.
I want the board concerned.
Yeah, I figured that. So, I make a motion that we approve A through C, E through F, and G through K. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I would also like to table L until May the 24th. So, the motion is made and second. All those in favor tabling L?
Aye.
Aye, aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Now, that's the end of the personnel. Board comments, board action. Go ahead, Mr. Roach. We'll talk about the naming.
Well, yes, we can do that.
Go ahead and do that.
Yeah. All I want to do is, knowing that the naming is, Principal concurs, everybody has been using that she likes Hart's Pre-K 8. Now, the question is, and I have, there's three there, but the one she kind of liked the most was Hart's Pre-K 8. Now, there's a Debbie Dingus as a principal, and she says that's all what we call it, that's what we've been calling it. But I felt like the board needs to be a part of that, not just take it for granted, you know, without your support. Someone had brought up Hart's Elementary/Middle School, that's another alternative. My question to you all, if you like Hart's Pre-K 8, which one would you like to see on the building? In other words, there's two ways to do that. And my question is that.
I'd like to, why don't we just take a poll of the personnel and just give them those three.
Well, I think if we took the poll of the personnel, they already would agree with Hart's Pre-K 8. That's more or less what she told me, Ms. Dingus.
So, that's.
What about the other schools?
What do we call every other? We call Duval, it's.
What do we call Duval?
Elementary Middle.
Yeah, they changed, they were originally PKA, and then they voted and went to Duval Elementary Middle School. I know, it's got Pre-K on a lot of stuff, and on the sign up there, and Darlin' typed it, because I asked that, and something came about, and they didn't want to be Pre-K 8, they wanted to be Elementary Middle.
Who voted?
I don't know.
I'd like to. I don't particularly have a favorite. I'd just like to see the continuity. If you have a PKA, we have three or four of them. I'd like to have all named the same.
When we get things from the state, financial things or any other thing, what is it usually said? Does anybody know curriculum things coming out of the state?
I can tell you, it says P R E K dash A, because I looked up the policy to see, and that's what it says.
For what school?
Well, that's, that's a programmatic definition.
Oh, okay.
Well, not Pre-K 8, I'm sorry, Pre-K 4. In the programmatic definitions, that's how it's described, P R E K dash 4, because that's a programmatic level. This is Hamlet's Pre-K 8.
Yes, ma'am.
What is guy in that?
Middle. So, we're not.
There's not any elementary business, um, it's just middle school.
That's right.
So, what are we talking? We're talking about Hart's, we're talking about Hamlet's, we're talking about Duval. Those are the three that have Pre-K 8.
Well, I call.
Well, Duval has Elementary Middle.
Yeah, when Eddie was out there, they voted to be Hamlet's Community School.
That's right, yeah. Well, let me share a second with you.
And that's on some of the later.
On curriculum issues, curriculum issues on what you're saying. Whenever you define Elementary Middle, you are separating continuity between the two schools. When you see Pre-K 8, you're seeing one school, a continuous progression grade, but it's one school. And you separate them, you're separated into two individual schools. I would suggest that you not do that, only because of curriculum-wise, you're trying to separate, you're different from us, and yes, there are some things, but most people call them the Pre-K 8. Just same for the continuity purpose.
I agree with you, but I think there should also be continuity on not all the schools. I think that Duval should be Duval Pre-K 8, and I think that Hamlet's should be Hamlet's Pre-K 8 for the very same reason.
Well, since it's not on the agenda tonight.
No, I'm just, that's my opinion.
Hart's Pre-K 8, and you can put, we can put those to agenda to a vote with the board to have the same continuity up to you all.
And that'd be probably, I mean, I think it should always be.
There's a sign in front of it, that's Elementary Middle.
Well, you know, I'll just say.
Signs are being taken down, beer.
I want aluminum ladders.
I don't know. If, just like with the faculty senate at Duval, I think they voted on that. I mean, I think that's important to the people that work with that school, that's what they want to do. I understand what you're saying. I mean, I get your vibe.
I mean, they didn't hear Mr. Roach's argument there of how that really distinguishes and separates these two schools. I think sometimes they do that.
Well, there is this, we have an annex.
I've been there.
Yeah, I'm sure. I was there. You were there when.
Our directory.
During your tenure, at all.
Use P K dash A, but the state programmatic levels is P R E K dash 4. I'm just telling you.
Let me, let me share this, because this discussion could go on and on.
Forever.
And not that anyone's wrong, but since we've talked about schools doing what they want, this is a school that wants Pre-K 8.
For sure, lock that.
I, I, yeah, and if it's not, I'll come back to the board, but that's from talking with Ms. Dingus, because I asked if it was Pre-K 8.
If that's what she said the faculty wants, then that's what we'll go with. I make a motion that it's Hart's Pre-K 8.
I like Pre-K 8, and I like.
And also, I want to share this, with two schools coming together like that for consolidation purposes, you want a different naming besides Hart's Middle or Intermediate and Hart's Primary, because you're. because you're trying to bring them into one school with one name, but it's another problem.
Well, I mean, the motion's on the floor, the motion has been suggested by Ms. Smith. All those in favor for Hart's pre-K eight? Say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? All right, the motion carries. Is there anything else as far as the comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Mine requires an emergency executive session due to Hart's elementary situation as far as interest. And I do plan, hold the board comes out of executive session for a vote, after we go into executive session, to come out for a vote. And I'm saying that for Hart's property, yes, and for also the news media, so they're not leaving thinking that there won't be a vote. Come out, there will be. Hold it.
Stick around.
Thanks.
I could lie to get you?
Thanks.
It won't be long.
I'll take one.
I'll take a chair up there.
Is the going executive session?
I second.
Is it for Hart's property?
Property.
Purchase.
All those in favor of going to executive session, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, we're not in the executive session. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to make a motion that we pay thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to this particular property. More. That is interest, that's all.
Executive.
I said it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
So that would be a total of seventy?
I'll share with-
It's a total of seventy thousand dollars. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Is there anything else?
Does that totally do us with the property now?
No.
That's just the third.
We still have the doctor.
Does that end the third one?
Yes.
Yes.
Settlement, settlement.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Grand total of seventy thousand dollars. That's all in interest.
That must have been small.
Yes.
Small parts.
Divided by the cemetery.
Okay.
And we negotiated, we both agree this is a-
I hope you're around when the doctors comes up.
I do too. I might come back.
They get along so well.
Does anyone have anything else? I make a motion, oh, I second the motion to adjourn and to convene on May the twenty fourth at six o'clock, two thousand eleven. All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.